Welcome to the Simsbury Board of Selectmen meeting for May 22, 2023. And we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we open with a public hearing for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposals. This came to our agenda last meeting, I believe. We put out a public notice that we were having a public hearing. We put out on March 8th information on how to apply for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. And I'm asking if there is anyone here to speak at this public hearing?
That's okay.
Oh, Susan. And we offer three minutes for public hearing speaking.
Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I didn't look at the agenda, but I assume the Simsbury-Grange application is on the agenda. Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to speak in favor of this, this program. It's money given out by the state every year to help community groups. And so it doesn't cost the town any money. It doesn't cost anyone in town any money. It's just a set program. We've been able to add to our insulation, replace our windows. We redid our windows with, you know, local businesses and redid the, you know, original wood windows with efficient glass. So we're trying to do everything to make the building super low maintenance, low cost, and use local contractors for everything. So I just wanted to speak in favor of this. And I don't know if there's any other applications, but I would support those also because I'm not trying to support the Grange over anybody else. It's, you know, I think this is a good program for the town. It doesn't cost anyone anything, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for the public hearing? With that, I will look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And our second agenda item in selectman action is to vote on the program. So I'm going to leave it there so we can move forward and get to public audience tonight. You have five minutes. We have a lot of people here. I'm going to have Joan come up first, and then we'll move along to Jeff and then Sarah.
Joan Cole, 26 Woodcombe Drive. The budget has passed with an increase of 6.44% and a mill rate of 31.82 with a 6.8% of the electors voting. These increases with lower property values, increased rents, and financially impact the business community. At the present time, there are 27 residential properties in foreclosure. There definitely will be sticker shock when the town taxes are received by the taxpayers. These increases are unsustainable and will eventually affect the community with unintended consequences. The present time, there are eight lawsuits against the town appealing their assessments. Although the increase affects everyone, only the businesses with deep pockets can sustain a lawsuit. Others just shutter their businesses, sell properties at a loss, or just move out of town. Another lawsuit against the Town Conservation Commission alleges serious issues of incompetence by Town Planner George McGregor. There are allegations that during the conservation meeting about the affordable housing proposal by Vessel Holdings for 80-unit rentals at 442 Hop Meadow Street, that there was an illegal vote. The lawsuit alleges that Town Planner George McGregor did not know the, quote, "number of votes needed to approve a motion," end quote. The lawsuit alleges, based on the erroneous information provided by Mr. McGregor, the Simsbury IWWA then voted illegally two more times during the meeting with changes to the proposed findings and varying terms and conditions, end quote. The lawsuit alleges, quote, "The Simsbury IWWA exceeded statutory and regulatory authority and acted illegally, unreasonable arbitrarily, and abuse of the discretion vested in it by failing to adhere to the initial vote properly taken at the quorum present," denying C number 22-29 application, end quote. During the tenure of Town Planner George McGregor, a deputy town planner returned to her original employment. The present code enforcement officer applied for a vacant deputy town planner position and was denied the position, but has been giving George McGregor professional support not required in her present position. The present code enforcement officer has accepted employment in another town with more advancement. The recent hire in the planning department as deputy town planner under the direction of Town Planner George McGregor is doomed to failure. Once again, the planning department with Town Planner George McGregor is a train wreck with little or no guidance to the boards and commissions, leading to chaos in determining the needed motions to accept or deny an application. As a result of what appears to be incompetence by Town Planner George McGregor, the town is in jeopardy of continued litigation. Under the umbrella of Town Planner George McGregor, there has been a proliferation of food trucks in town without any site plan approvals. The Farmington Valley Health District has given permit approvals for two restaurants associated food trucks, Present Company Food Truck and Milrite Food Truck in 2022, 2023. They do not have liquor permits. The planning department receives a copy of the permit and should have known that the food trucks were in violation of the zoning regulations, but turned a blind eye until tract to supply was notified of an illegal food truck on their property through a complaint. Milrite Food Truck and Present Company Food Truck are presently operating without any site plan amendments. The planning department is presently developing a zoning regulation for food trucks a little too late. Recently, the police department upgraded their pistols that allow all officers, that all officers wear on their belts. The new guns were purchased from a manufacturer after a lengthy review of manufacturers. The old guns were then sold to Perro's Gun Shop, refurbished and resold. With a proliferation of guns on the market, is it appropriate for the police department to sell the guns to a gun dealer, or should they be destroyed? The state of Connecticut has a law denying the public access to the names of people having gun permits. Several years ago, the names of the people with permits were available.
30 seconds.
The reasoning at the time was that the, that given the names of people with permits would add to an increase of burglaries. To my knowledge, there have been no burglaries with guns taken from homes in Simsbury. At the time, that might have been true, but now with guns readily available through Internet gun and others, there is no need to continue of the law, removing the names of gun owners. When children go to friends' homes, parents should be able to access the names of people who might have guns in their home. Since the state is reviewing gun laws, I would suggest that they review the law that limits the public from names of people owning gun permits. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan.
All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Cole and Facebook.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jeff is asked to go second, so I'm going to let Jeff come up. We're going to time you, Jeff. Five minutes.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Hi there. Jeff Dornberg, 225 Old Farms Road. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, and I'm actually here just to give you an update, let you know what's going on. We have an exciting season coming up. Little River Band is here June 22. Talcott Mountain is here all through July as usual, and they have a great, great lineup this year. Circus Smarcus is here the first and second of August. And Brewstock is here August 5. All of this is in the schedule. It's in the back of the annual reports that I left on your desk. I hope you had a chance to look through it. I also wanted to take a chance while I'm in front of you to thank you. I've thanked town staff several times, but the addition of the paved lot and the fence is just amazing what it's done for the professionalism of our facility. It's just, it's taken it to a whole other level, and it couldn't have happened without you guys, so thank you for that. We're hoping to make some more changes coming forward. We've met with Pollinator Pathway, and I met with Tom Taberski in Orlando just the other day at the site, and we have a proposal from them for how to put in some native plants that will cut down on maintenance and also add to the, to the professional look of the facility. We're very excited about that. Hopefully, we'll do some planning this, this fall. Those of you who follow, we've made a lot of changes on our board. We've added a lot of great new people, and we are extremely excited about, about the future of our board. And one last thing, I would say that this year, we're participating in Birdies for Charity with the Travelers Championship. You can find this on our website. You can find a link on their website. And through June 25th, if you feel compelled to make a donation to the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, Webster Mac is putting a 15% bump on that, so your dollars go a little bit further. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you this summer. No, you can, Sarah Nielsen. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Sarah Nielsen, the Simsbury Main Street Partnership. As many of you know, Simsbury Main Street Partnership makes sure that issues are addressed between the business and property owners in the town. A lot of times, we're the conduit, making sure that our business and property owners follow the correct regulations, permits, ordinances, et cetera. And today, we're here for a different reason. So we have been hearing from so many property owners this year. I've been doing this job more than two decades, and there have been complaints, you know, over the years about the commercial revow. This year, there has been an unprecedented number of complaints, okay? Many are concerned because they've already felt the cost of goods that have increased, the cost of utilities that have increased, they've suffered COVID losses, they've lost tenants, and now the revow has made things harder. Most of my tenants, there's a good number of tenants that have a gross lease, which means that as a small tenant, as a small property owner, when the taxes go up, when utilities, when anything goes up, they don't add that into their lease, okay? Gross lease means they've signed a five-year lease, a seven-year lease, a 10-year lease, and they can't change and move those increased services over to their tenants. Even those, and I'll read you a couple of things from some that have triple net leases where they have allowed that, again, they're feeling the pressure because people are going to move out of Simsbury. And so what we're asking is, first, I'd like the, all the property owners that are here for this issue to stand up. This is millions of dollars worth of property owners in the town of Simsbury, and then we have a lot that couldn't make it, okay? The Mitchells, the Nacherians who own Fiddler's Green, Andy Andreo, Steven Antonio, Bob Holloway, Bill Dom is a property owner, Melissa Brett, Dave Richman, Nord Christensen, the skating center, and we have many more. So we're talking about millions of dollars. These are people that don't come here lightly. And you could sit back down, I'm sorry. They don't come here lightly to do this, but we are asking for your help. Before the town moves towards very costly litigation, okay? There are some cases, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but there are some cases where property, their assessment's gone up 100%. It's doubled with minimal changes. And so before, lots of them have had to, the only recourse they've had lately is they have to file a lawsuit against the town. And we're asking the Board of Selectmen, as the policymakers, as the people that, you know, oversee the town, there needs to be something else done before the town spends all your money. They spend all their money to fight these battles. The final thing I'll say is, as Main Street, we work really hard with the property owners on the vacancies. We've had an unprecedented number of vacancies in Simsbury lately. You cannot miss that as you're driving throughout town, okay? It makes our job harder. We're working, we're getting close to filling some vacancies very shortly, but what we're doing is, we're, we're pricing Simsbury so high that people are going to either move to another town, they'll open a business in another town, you know? There are real serious issues with this, okay? So we're asking for your help. I don't know what, we're asking you, what can be done legally? What are the, what are the recourses? Can we talk to Bob DiCrescendo? What can the town do before we move into a battle of, you know, all of our business owners suing the town and the town having to spend all that money to defend? What can we do to find a middle ground? I will have Vanna. She's going to pass out, but we also have a couple of property owners that could not be present. Dave Urbach sent in a message, as well as Tom Ryan. Dave owns Seven Herman Drive, and he did a great job summarizing his. And Tom Ryan is the managing partner of Simsbury Town Shops. I'll just summarize for Dave because I think it's, it's important. His recent revow went from $9,400 to over $15,000. His leases are fixed and not triple net like others. He cannot compensate for this increase, nor can he sell his property for what the town now claims it's worth. This is an increase of about 33%. And so he goes on, but the last thing he says is, "This would devastate me. All of us cannot be wrong about this travesty." Okay? And he left his, his name and his address. So again, I thank the Board of Selectmen, I thank the town, you've been great partners, but I'm asking you, what can we do before we end up everybody spending money to fight this? What can be done? There's got to be a middle ground, there's got to be something else before we move down this road. And then I'll invite property owners to speak as they.
Thanks, Sarah.
Good evening. David Richman, I live at 52 Wood Duck Drive Lane. I own 760 Hot Meadow. I own 70 Hot Meadow now in Wheaton, which is the self-storage facility, and I own 30 Winthrop Street in Terrifield, which we renovated. I've been doing real estate for, since I was 23 years old. I bought my first six family in Springfield, Massachusetts for $10 from my father. Increasing assessments force us to raise rents because in this marketplace, we have increased maintenance costs, utility costs, paint. Everything's gone up. So now, when you increase, interest rates have gone up, insurance. I asked my insurance agent, you know, is everything going up? Yes, it is. So when you increase assessments, you force us to increase our rents. And in our buildings, especially 760, that's a gross rent building, which means the rent covers all expenses. We don't add anything to the rents. We have 14 tenants in that building. They're all paying between $500 and $800 a month. And I've asked them, I said, "If I increase your rent $100 a month, what are you going to do?" "I'm going to move back home. We love it here, but we're going to move." So that's something you need to understand. The other thing is, in this market, if I took the assessed value of 760 Hot Meadow and put it on the market for that price, we wouldn't get it today. There's nobody buying office buildings in Simsbury today. Ask some of the landlords. We have, we're fortunate, we have a pretty high occupancy, but it's very difficult. And I want someone on the board to understand that equity in the building that we own has nothing to do with assessments. That means I freaking worked my rear end off for 20 years, paying the mortgage off, and when I didn't have tenants, I had to borrow money to pay the mortgage. So equity is our hard work. That's what we get for years and years of working and being self-employed. So I'm telling, I'm just saying that this is not a good thing for this town. And to have these, all these people here, we represent, we pay $150,000 a year in property taxes, okay? We don't want them to rise or increase. And so many people think, oh, it's just like a house. Commercial real estate is not like a house. So I'm asking the board to reconsider what's been going on and to reevaluate the assessments. Thank you.
It's worse, worse. That gets worse.
I brought handouts, too. There's two, Nick.
Sarah. I can see it, I can read it. Thanks.
This doesn't count for half an hour, three minutes, right?
No, all right. No, I didn't start the timer yet.
Hold it, hold it.
Hey, how are you? Can you try?
Okay, I'll start you when you get up there.
Okay, I'm Steve Antonia. I reside at 133 Holcomb Street, Simsbury. I'm here about our commercial properties, though. In Simsbury, we have 392 commercial properties. 17 of these are churches, seven are fire department. The rest of us, the rest of them are owned privately. When I received my new assessment for October 2022, I was shocked at the increase in commercial property values. The town assessor is saying that commercial properties increased in value, an astounding 35.1% in value over the previous 60 months. That's the thicker sheet I handed out. There, there are many ways to value commercial property, based on the physical landmass, you can do it that way. You can also do what's called a rent roll, which is a percentage of the rental income. But as everyone knows, something is only worth what you can sell it for. So comparable sales value is the definitive approach of what something is worth. I researched the past three years of comparable sales for commercial properties. There were 16 transactions representing about 5% of the commercial properties changed hands in three years, in the previous three years. Three of these received extensive improvements, so they are not the norm, and I did not include them in the averaging that I came up with. Not that I came up with that comparable sales are, that's the one in front of you. That is math, and the commercial properties increased in value over the previous 60 months? 4.4%, not 35.1%. I contested the dramatic increase on eight of our commercial properties and met with the company our town hired to derive these values, as well as our town assessor. The results were, three went down a little bit, three stayed the same, and astonishingly, two of them went up, which I didn't even know could happen as a result of contesting the valuation of the properties. I then went to the Board of Appeals. I took the time to meet with them, I went over everything, and ultimately, as I was talking with the board at the end, they told me the town assessor has the final say, and in fact, there was no change to any of the eight commercial properties that I went to the Board of Assessment Appeals with. In closing, the values of our properties went up 4.4%. Just because the town assessor says 35.1% does not change what my property is worth. As a result, we are shouldering more of the burden of operating the town we love. We are also being forced to sue ourselves inasmuch as we are the town of Simsbury. We have 60 days to file suit against the town. Many landowners have already done that. I'm finding myself being shoved into the same thing. It's going to be expensive for the town because each property has its own nuances, each one has to be a separate lawsuit. It cannot be a class-action suit because they're so different, no lawyer will take all of us at one. We're about to go under a burden because I'll have eight lawsuits coming. I don't know how many other people will have, and it's really a chagrin because, again, I'm suing myself just because someone said my property went up 35.1% when I have the facts that 4.4% is comparable sales approach of what it's really worth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Brett, 77 Seminary Road, owner of Weldon Hardware and through Brett Properties,
the Weldon Building, 8 through 14 Station Street. I think you know what, get in the gist here, what we're talking about. It's serious, folks. It's very serious. Commercial property is not like residential. My taxes will increase 23% with the new mill rate. So if you were renting an office from me, you were renting an apartment from me because I have 24 mixed-use units at the Weldon Building, if you were renting that, if I came up to you and said, "I'm increasing your rent by 23%," what would you do? You would leave, or you would close your doors. That's what's going to happen. So you've got to realize, as our volunteers, yes, you are volunteers, but also as the ones who represent us, the taxpayers, you need to do something. You need to see what's going on with the assessments, commercial assessments, you need to see what's going on in the assessor's office. You've got to realize, people here, this is our retirement. This is not our 401Ks and our pensions, and we're just going to go, oh, well. We put our life savings, our blood, sweat, and tears here, and we're going to lose it. We are literally going to lose our retirement. If that was happened to you, would you fight? I think so. The recourse that we have, as you hear, is going to be lawsuits, and no one wants that to happen. So we're asking you, we're pleading you, begging you, look into this. If you were going to have your mortgage increase 20%, would you fight it? Would you change it? Would you move? I think so. We don't want to do that. We keep our properties increasing and growing and making nice and pretty and everything, and it costs a lot of money. My, my utilities just last year went up 19%. I'm paying for that, not my tenants, because I am gross as well. I cannot tell someone who has a one-room office who's barely making the rent that you're going to have to be increased by 5, 10, 23%. I cannot do that. They will close their doors. The hairdresser below, she will close her doors. Vincent Sportshop, been here forever as a landmark in this place, he will need to close his doors. Where is all that money going to go for all of our tenants? It's going to leave Simsbury as well. So not only is it just a tax base, but all the business that are brought in from those tax people, taxpayers as well, are going to be leaving this town. And you're going to see for sale and for rent, all up and down Route 10. And as the Board of Selectmen, you need to pay attention to this, and there will be more lawsuits coming. Please pay attention to it, and let us know what you guys are intending to do going forward. We make these cries, but then we don't hear what might be happening. So I'm just begging you, please listen. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Who is up?
Yeah, the big guys come over.
Good evening. My name is Andy Andrio. I live at Tenshrall Lane in West Simsbury, and we have the center shops, the white building in the center of town, fronts Iron Horse and Hop Meadow Street. Our assessment went up 100% from 2017 to 2022. It went from 1.9 to 3.8 million. Granted, we did some renovations, but when I, right, when I first got the notice, I thought it was a mistake. I said, "It can't be." So I went to the hearing, the preliminary hearing with the revaluation company and the assessor, and I said, "How do you arrive at this?" You know? Well, we have various ways. Well, they have, you know, every year, we have to file an income and expense report, which shows how much you're making and what your expenses are and the operating income. And I says, you know, "Based on that, this doesn't make any sense." I says, "Well, we also value it as far as replacement costs." Well, I said, "If you had replaced," we did, "if you had replaced it with these incomes, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do the work. It makes no sense. It's just, the income doesn't, doesn't, doesn't support what the renovations were." So they said, "Well..." She couldn't give me the details of what they did, and neither could the revow company. So then I submitted a, I hired an appraiser, submitted a statement of his appraisal. It wasn't, wasn't an appraisal, but it was a cap, cap rate assessment, what he did. And that came back about 2.3 million, based upon the fact that University of Connecticut Health Center being in there, but as of October of 2022, they still weren't in there. He just started paying rent now in May. But even using that as a figure in there, it came back at 2.3 as opposed to a 3.8. So with that, I tried to apply it for the BAA, but because the property's worth more than $1 million, they have the right to refuse, which they did. They don't want it. So I had no recourse but to have to file a lawsuit. Don't want to go through with the lawsuit, but it cannot, you know, 100% increase is maddening. And the assessor's response was, "Talk, call me." So needless to say, I'm not a happy camper. We're going to fight it. We'll probably prevail, but in the meantime, it's going to cost us a lot of money between expert witnesses and attorneys, and it's going to cost the town money for attorneys. And we own multiple properties in other towns. We only go to court when we have to. We feel we're being aggrieved, and we're definitely being aggrieved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to?
Yeah.
Sure, Bill.
He's going to speak for me because I forgot.
Bill Dom, 19 Adams Road, Wheaton. I just, Sarah forgot to ask, but how many of these property owners are also residents of Simsbury? Double taxpayers?
I'm going to ask a question just because you're all here. So when the commercial revows went out, that was in December, I believe, and it gave you like five days to respond, correct?
Correct.
And I'm assuming everybody tried to respond, and then you go through an appeals process after that?
It was a preliminary hearing, wasn't it?
Okay, preliminary hearing.
Christmas week, they had it here.
Okay. And then if that doesn't satisfy you, then you deal with the assessor and the eval company, correct?
No, then you deal with BAA.
Oh, BAA, correct. Sorry about that.
That was in April.
Okay. And they do BAA separately? Do they do commercials separate than residential? Everybody just goes together?
All together.
Okay. So there should be stats on how many businesses have questioned, how many are of, right? So we can get that, if, whatever. Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, we would talk to, we have to talk to our finance director, who, the assessor works with the finance director, and there might be data that we can get and she can look at to see what kind of trends there are. And then I'm just, I just wanted to put that out there before you continue because there are measures out there that we could have our town professionals look at and then loop us in. Okay.
Nord Christensen, Simsmore Square. Been a resident of town for nearly 70 years, sixth generation. Never seen anything like this before in my life. Never seen anything like this before in my life. We, in response to the comment you just made, yes, the notices came out between Christmas and New Year's. I got half of them. I didn't get them all. I got half of them. I actually had to call and request the second half of our. We have 17 properties altogether, and I got, I got half of them, but not all of them. I had to call to request to get the others. Pardon me, I'm not as organized as some of these people. We have 70 commercial and residential tenants. All of our leases are gross. It's all, it's all, some of this is all the stuff they've already said. All of our leases are gross. I have a whole pile of leases I have put on hold renewing. I have some tenants that I have told, you're not going to get an increase, and I have made a verbal agreement with them, that they're not going to get an increase. I have not renewed those leases intentionally at this point, because I can't keep that promise at this point. I'm going to need to increase my rents. I feel very fortunate, we are at 100% occupancy. We have been at 100% occupancy since 2009, but there's been a price for that. Our prices, the prices, our rents are under, we're not charging what we should get for rents. And my theory was, a full complex, half a loaf of bread's better than none. That's been my approach since 2009, and I have been very slowly trying to increase those rents. This is going to force me to increase them dramatically. When I heard stories of tenants or landlords increasing rents by 2, 3, 4, $500 like that, I was, how the hell can they do that? This is crazy. Well, I'm going to be in that position now. I'm forced to be in that position because of this. Met with the insurance agent this morning, went over all our policies. We're expecting a 10% across-the-board increase on the insurance policies at this point, and we pay a fair amount of insurance. We also, one of the things we discussed was replacement value. Replacement value is completely different from assessed value. We cannot, we have a couple of buildings we cannot sell for one-third of what they would cost to replace today. So when we hear about, well, you know, you should be happy your valuation up, because that means you're worth more, it's like, no, complete opposite, absolutely complete We did the informal appeal, got absolutely nowhere, not a dollar's worth of consideration on the informal appeal with the company, the appraisal, the evaluation company. We filed for the formal appeal through the assessor. We were told that three of our properties are over a million dollars in value, and they wouldn't even hear them. So, again, add insult to injury. I guess that's about, everything they've already said, I just, and I'm frustrated as hell with it. I apologize for the language, but I'm pissed. And to go to the budget hearings and find that there's almost nobody there contesting it, and the budget going up by what it's going to go up on top of, on top of the revale, is just, it's a swat in the head to me. It just, I can't believe it. And none of these, I don't want to be here doing this tonight, and I bet most of these people don't, but we feel like at some point, we've got to hit the mule and head with the two-by-four to get his attention.
Nice example. Thank you.
Hi, Matt Natcharian, 3 Ridgeberry Road, and along with Lisa, an owner of Fiddler's Green. And just for context, in the five years since we purchased, or just over five years since we purchased that property and invested in the town, because we really were excited about being involved in the center of town, we haven't made any money on this property, yet the valuation still goes up. We've only had to keep putting money into the property. And COVID was a huge hit, and maybe it wouldn't be like this if we didn't hit COVID. But we have to subsidize our tenants. We're not going to kick out restaurants that are struggling, because no one's coming around, and you probably know we have some vacancies. That's not because of lack of our trying to help fill those. And we'll now have to invest in those properties even more to entice new tenants to come in. And, you know, some of them just couldn't make it because of COVID, and, you know, there'll be a new round of people that try and want to go into business. But it's, you know, in the context of the assessments, our assessment was terrible, because we bought the property right before assessment, or right after assessments were done last time. So I got no relief that time, and it punched a big hole in our budget. This time, we got a little bit, but we had to go hire an outside appraiser and waste our money for that, to make the same arguments people have already discussed. So just, you know, the whole center and the rest of the town, the business community, needs more support to help the businesses, our tenants, be successful.
Anyone else who wants to speak? Sure. I don't know if anyone's.
Did Susan volunteer?
Yes. Volunteer.
Okay, okay.
But can I speak? I have a note about, I wanted to speak too. Can I speak after a major letter?
Sure.
But I wanted to see if there's any other business owners that want to speak, because this is a changing topic.
Sure. Any other business owners, anyone who wants to speak?
Good evening, Mike Beckensal, 18 White Oak Lane. I'm proxy for Kelly Beckensal, who's the general manager of International Skating Center. I don't have any prepared remarks, just simply, just simply want to remind everyone that small business ownership is the foundation of every town across the United States. And every town faces hardships in balancing budgets, but if you, if you take away the small business owner's ability to sell their product, which by and large, what you've heard tonight, is not just renting, but it's renting to other small business owners, thus creating a stream of growth and life within the town. So I support all the comments that folks have made tonight, and I'm confident you'll act on their behalf.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, any other business owners who would like to speak, and, you know, share their comments? Mark?
I just encourage you to listen to these people. We've got a great town, I was born and raised here. It's always been a town that people can reason, and we can work things out. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. Sure. Okay, so now we could have the Susan Messino and the Diane Nash.
Do you want to come up?
Okay.
I thought she could look like she was talking, and I could pretend. I just want to say, I had a letter to read on behalf of Diane Nash, 5 Marywood. Yes, okay. So Diane's comments, "To the Board of Selectmen, Simsbury did not reject a 64-unit affordable housing project. Simsbury did reject a 10-unit deed and income and price-restricted affordable housing unit. 10 more deeds were restricted by price only, and that would have allowed a developer to erect a four-story building containing 44 unrestricted units on a two-acre parcel with less than two cars per unit parking. It's an outrageous claim that Simsbury, its residents, and elected governing volunteers are opposed to affordable and inclusive housing. The developers' statements almost reach the level of actionable defamation of character. The published statement that these units will provide housing for our teachers, firefighters, and other workforce is at best misleading, because no such priorities are established. Simsbury must, with clarity and passion, issue a public statement of our goals, history, and progress in making this a community welcome to all. Included must be that 27% of our housing is market price affordable, but does not qualify in the percentages under the Affordable Housing statute, because it is not deed-restricted. Included must be that many of our deed-restricted and affordable properties are not eligible to be included in a moratorium, because they were built before 1990. Included also that many of our CHFA-restricted qualifying properties have never been enumerated and maybe, and maybe most regarded, include that 30% of Simsbury's land is conserved open space accessible to all people with no residency, taxpaying, income, or age requirements. Who is charged with the task to restore our reputation? Who is charged to do the research and gather the facts that will show Simsbury's eligibility for a moratorium? It's clear that this must be done promptly, as this latest housing proposal undermines the principles and objectives of 830G, as well as Simsbury's core values. If volunteers are needed, my name can be added. Diane Nash." So that's from Diane.
Okay.
Now I'll move on to my comments. Now I'm Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. Just to follow up on Diane's point, Diane and I both went to the Inclusive Housing Forum, and we sat at a table of seven or eight people, and it was pretty remarkable, the range of ages, from 25 to 85, the range of sort of perspectives and different needs, and, you know, all the full range of the political spectrum. But we all shared a very common goal, and shared some really common sense ideas that we could all agree on. I mean, we all want to have everyone in Simsbury have a high quality of life. We want property owners to get their fair value for their properties, and we want to pursue common sense ideas that will allow this to be the kind of community that we all love long into the future. And so everyone agreed on that, and then the other thing that came up at the end of the forum was that if we don't figure out what we're going to do, the developers will decide it for us. And so that's the situation we're in right now, and it's difficult to pursue those common sense ideas, because we're just kind of letting ourselves be buffeted by what comes towards us. And if you do the math, we would have to put over 25 of those large buildings into town in order to meet the requirements, based, you know, just doing the math on how this would go. It's in fact, well over 25. So I really would like the town to get on a positive path on this, and really get people with different ideas together, and I think we could even find some private money to support some innovative options. I've been to a number of webinars about affordable housing over the past few years, and it's striking to me about how they're all about building more stuff. It's not about, you know, converting buildings, or preventing evictions, or providing vouchers, or making sure existing buildings are fully occupied, or, you know, lists, you could just go on and on and on, cohousing options, et cetera, et cetera. It's always about, don't be racist and exclusionary, and be upset if they want to put a big building that looks, that's, you know, people don't feel it's going to provide a good quality of life for the people living there, that, you know, you're just supposed to accept that, otherwise, you're a bad person. And I want to say, I lived in affordable housing for seven years. There are so many better options that would, people would have a much better quality of life. I have two more short points, but I think I just used up a lot of my time, and so now, but I took a little bit of Diane's extra time on that. So that's my comments about the affordable housing. I wanted to also tell everyone about the Grange Fair on Saturday, June 10th, where it's like a mini Big E. You can bring your crafts, jellies, jams, art, baked goods, you know, any fruits and vegetables you might have. We have a prize wheel, we have a live band out the box in the afternoon. We also have some vendors and nonprofits, and some great old-fashioned kids games. I also want to mention, on behalf of the Grange, that we have the second in our Beaver Pond Wildlife Series this Thursday. We have a social hour at 6:00, and then the film starts at 7:00. In episode two, and the filmmaker will be there to answer questions, he always brings some special things, there'll be a surprise. And the second episode, "As Spring Gets Fully Underway," some of the wildlife scenes will include nesting warblers and other bird species, bucks sporting velvet antlers, kingfishers and herons fishing, kingbirds and others catching insects midair, a goosefight, mating water snakes, frogs, tadpoles, and aquatic insect life, ospreys fishing, and at the nest, red fox kits at the den, young beavers dispersing, beavers working on dams at night, mating snapping turtles, a painted turtle depositing eggs in the sand, how beavers choose a new home site, a pilliated woodpecker devouring ants, nesting herons, and much more. So I haven't actually read that until just now, and I sound like a crazy person, but these films are awesome.
Not at the Board of Selectmen, you don't.
Thank you. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the Beaver Pond film. We've got a lot of detail already. I hope to see you there this Thursday, and thank you so much.
Thanks, Susan.
Oh, and I want to thank Andy for letting us use his parking lot for our e-cycles, and also Steve Antonio, when we did that on behalf of the Grange. We did it at Oldwell. I don't know if we asked you, or we asked Frank, but thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, anyone else here for public audience?
Can I just make a comment? I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. We don't have, we don't get community engagement like this, and you're at a different level of the community. David, I made a, the comment I made to you, and you very kindly stopped me to talk about it, about equity. There was probably a lack of depth in my response to you, so I do apologize to that. Mike, you know, I think that what you said was, kind of really struck a chord about, you know, the community within the community, and that's incredible. I think about, you know, myself, and I'm a client of Mark's, going to, you know, going to work with him this week on something significant.
Oh, here we go.
No, no, no. Well, yeah, but you, yeah, but you overcharged me. So Mr. Holloway, I think about the two kitchens with you, and Steve, I, you know, utilize some of your, you know, your property owners. And, you know, Melissa, going down there this week, she just told me that something was in that I ordered. You know, Mr. Christiansen, I, you know, I use some of your vendors and your, or your tenants. You know, I get my haircut. All my boys get my haircut, you know, from one of your tenants. I choose not to go to the skating rink, because I don't need to break anything. So I'm sorry, I'm not, but I think about how much I'm, how much I am part of your ecosystem, and I choose to support all of either your businesses or your tenants' businesses, and I don't go anywhere else. Now, that's just a commitment I've made, and my mother ingrained in me, about living in a town of Simsbury. I don't think anyone up here doesn't want to respond to your requests, to the depth that we can. Mr. Andreo, I, you know, I hope we can, because I agree with you. When I'm looking at the numbers, and I run a business too. I run a very large business, and I would look at that, and I'd be like, I'd be out of business. So I think, I'm not speaking to anyone up here, but I appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and everything you said. I think that we want nothing other than to avoid something that's, you know, unequitable, embarrassing, and unnecessary, to the extent we can. So thank you for letting me.
Can I add one little comment?
One little comment.
Time is running out. For us, we have no choice but to act in the next week or so, if we're going to. So keep that in mind.
Thanks. Okay, okay. Now we have our presentation. If anybody wants to stay for the presentation?
Our business is.
Oh, okay. So, thanks for coming. So as everyone knows, or people don't know, June is Pride Month. That starts on June 1st, and the Board of Selectmen does not meet again till June 12th. So we are going to do our proclamation tonight, and make everyone aware. and make everyone aware of the flag raising that we're having on June 1st. And there's a proclamation in the, in our packet, and I was hoping that we could all kind of just read through it again, if everybody can call it up. And Heather, you wanna, are you on the page? Do you want to start?
I'm just getting there.
Okay.
Here we are. Okay.
Okay.
Proclamation recognizing June 2023 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Simsbury. Whereas, the town of Simsbury is committed to supporting the visibility, dignity, and equity for everyone in our community and affirms our obligation to protect the most vulnerable among us and...
Whereas, Simsbury recognizes the contributions of the LGBTQ plus residents, students, employees, and business owners to the cultural and civic fabric of our town and remains committed to protecting their civil rights in our unified effort to forge a more open and just society and...
Whereas, advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of LGBTQ people plus people throughout the nation, but there continues to be discrimination and injustice in acts of hate, making it important for towns like Simsbury to stand up and show support for members of our community who identify as LGBTQ plus and...
Whereas, Simsbury joins many cities and towns across the United States in recognizing and celebrating June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month as a commitment to standing in solidarity with all LGBTQ plus Americans and...
Whereas, the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ plus people in society and...
Whereas, the Pride Walk along Iron Horse Boulevard serves as Simsbury's ongoing and unwavering commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion and...
Whereas, we ask for and encourage everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding and...
Now, therefore be it resolved that we, members of the Simsbury Board of Selectmen, hereby proclaim June 2023 Pride Month in the town of Simsbury in support of our LGBTQ plus community and be it further resolved that the rainbow flag will be raised on this day, June 1st, 2023, recognizing all LGBTQ members of our community whose influence, advocacy, and contributions to our neighborhoods make the town of Simsbury a vibrant community in which to live, work, and play. One question I have here, I had raised the idea of the time, we have it at 5:30, and I don't know if there's another conflict that night in town that is kind of a pride celebration kickoff. So, I don't know if there's a chance that we can move this to 5 o'clock for anybody, or is 5:30 firm? And I, Tom, I think you were going to check with, we need Public Works involved, right?
We need to check the facility.
Okay, I don't know if that works for people, but I mean, we could send out an email or something like that. And then just confirm the time. So, right now it'll be 5:30, but if people weren't able to attend, we could adjust that. Okay, now we move on to, oh, the first Selectmen's report. Okay, so, the first thing I wanted to just call attention to is send our condolences to the Rinaldi family. Dr. Michael Rinaldi passed away on May 13th at his home in Simsbury. He was well known as a passionate advocate for causes he believed in, and he came to speak at our public, our Bar Selectmen Public Audience many, many times over the years. We did not always all agree, but he took advantage of the opportunity to share his views with our town government and to let his voice be heard. And we thank you for your relief in the democratic process. And this will go out, but I did include the obituary to Dr. Rinaldi. I wanted to give an update on our Town Manager Search. On Monday, May 15th, the Executive Search Committee, which is made up of all members of the Board of Selectmen, made an executive, met an executive session with Attorney Mike Harrington and Attorney Bob D. Crescenzo to review the three applicants that we were considering. A consensual decision was made and voted on in open session. We have selected GovHR USA as the firm, and we look forward to working with them. We all agreed that we liked their methodology from creating a desired Town Manager profile to bringing in qualified candidates and including multiple stakeholders along the way. We all felt that they were a good fit to work with our community, and they have a proposed timeline of the next three to four months. So, I just did include a link to their website. We did have our Hometown Heroes Awards tonight, and I included a link there, but we've awarded to Alvin Schwab, Bob Bronlick, Dennis Micho, Brad Griswold, the Friends of Simsbury Library, and Michelle Janks were the award winners tonight. I also wanted to comment on the housing forum that many of us attended on May 10th, was put on by the DEI Council. It was an engaging discussion where we worked with our neighbors and discussed what was, what brought us to Simsbury, what we liked about Simsbury, what we don't like about Simsbury, and kind of how to address the housing needs. There were some takeaways from this event and to figure out ways that we can elevate this discussion with action plans going forward. One thing I wanted to call out is that the Planning Commission is working on the P O C D, which has a lot of housing components, and they are incorporating their affordable housing plan in the P O C D. And that this will, once that comes up, this will be a good place to partner with them as that housing plan comes in and to see what we need to do to make action happen. One other piece that I included in here is, so we all strive to ensure that Simsbury is an inclusive community, and we pride ourselves on welcoming all who live and visit here. The DEI Council in the housing forum shared, they shared a video that's mostly audio, but it really had some differing views that were collected from our residents. And those of us that were there felt it was really impactful. So, that is also attached in the, in the report for those who want to listen to that. Sorry, this is a little longer after all the public audience. So, just want to give the Board an update on the Main Street Partnership, the MOU. We had talked about that. It's one of our established goals for this term. And during our workshop, we discussed that we would make the funding conditional on the Main Street providing us with an MOU. So, I have taken, I received a draft from Sarah Nielsen, and I have given that to our interim Town Manager, Chief Bolter, and he's going to share it with the Town Attorney for an initial review. And then, once we get a working draft in place, we'll bring it to the Board to discuss at our level. But this will help define roles and responsibilities for the Main Street and for working with Sarah Nielsen. Vessel Property had just commented that that vote was voted down, and there's, you can go watch the meeting on SCTV. We have a new Simsbury Granby Chamber of Commerce Director, Ray Legan, and he used to be the head of the Master School. I wanted to thank the Public Works Department for the Touch a Truck. I won't read it all. The Board of Selectmen has our bike ride, May, it's next week, May 30th, right? May 30th. And I do want to talk about the, our big, the big night that's coming, May 26th for the Simsbury Duck Race. The Board of Selectmen is going to try again to win the duck race. We are using the same team of engineers, Ellie Askem and her dad, Sean. We came in second last year, but we had some technical, technical issues.
Right at the end, yep.
And that we're hoping that our team, that team is working to reconfigure. So, come cheer us on. And then I included some information on Memorial Day parades. I think that's the longest I've ever said, but I did write a lot. I've never written a list, so.
That's long.
Okay, well, you know what? I had a lot to say. I put it down and I said it. And now I'm moving on to the chief.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. So, just a few notes. The library is looking for a book bike summer intern. If you know someone who would be interested in this opportunity, please have them go to our website, forward slash jobs. The bike, book, I'm sure the book bike summer intern would be responsible for riding the book bike to various locations in town, including the five elementary schools, and engage with the community to build knowledge and understanding of the breadth and scope of library offerings, programs, and services. Public Works had the, or hosted the annual Touch a Truck event this past Saturday, and there were over 500 participants with raving reviews from both kids and adults. There were endless amounts of trucks and equipment from the Highway Department, as well as some from the Parks and Recreation, Police, and Fire Departments. The Public Works Department will be hosting a regional household hazardous waste collection at the DPW facility at 66 Town Forest Road on Saturday, June 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Participants should access the Town Forest Road from Strattonburg Road to keep the line orderly. Residents will be able to dispose of their qualifying items at no cost by providing proof of residency upon arrival. These collections are for items that cannot go into the regular trash, keeping hazardous materials from being deposited into the landfill. And more information can be found on the Public Works page of our website. The Police Department will be again hosting the annual Junior Police Academy from July 31 through August 4th for children of Simsbury, 5th grade to 8th grade. They will experience hands-on methods and techniques in the profession of law enforcement. Throughout this academy, respect, self-discipline, integrity, equality, education, and physical fitness will be stressed. Attendees will also gain an understanding of community responsibility, problem solving, and the role of the public servant. You can visit the Police Department website on the town website for more information and an application. And one last mention on the Memorial Day parades. There'll be two parades in town again this year for Memorial Day. The Terrifield Parade begins at 9:00 a.m., starts on Winthrop Street at Main Street, travels up Winthrop Street into St. Bernard Cemetery, and followed by a ceremony. And then the Simsbury Parade begins at 1:30 p.m. It starts on Route 10 at Owens Brook Boulevard and travels south on Route 10 to Simsbury Veterans Memorial in front of the library for a ceremony there. And I hope you can all join us.
Okay, be there. Okay, so, let's go to Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports, and I'm going to start with Heather and work this way.
Okay, great. I just have something quick. The Friends of the Simsbury Public Library begin collecting donated books for their annual book drive next week. Tuesday and Fridays, 10 to 12, I believe.
Good to know. I got a lot of books, take care of them.
I do as well, I've been collecting.
Sean? Okay, I don't have any updates?
I would just mention that the Senior Center will be closed on Monday for the Memorial Day holiday. So, all other programming the rest of the week is still ongoing, but it will be closed for Memorial Day.
Thanks. Okay. Okay, let's get into Selectmen action. We start with our tax refunds. Looking for a motion effective May 2022, 2023 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $283. That's a little amount. And to authorize interim Town Manager Nick Bolter to execute the tax refunds.
Move that.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next up is approving the Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposals. We have the two, one from the Grange and one from the Social Services for the food program. If anybody had any questions, or if there's any comments anybody needs to add on these items. Okay, move effective May 22nd, 2023 to approve the Neighborhood Assistance Act program applications as presented and to authorize interim Town Manager Nicholas Bolter to submit the application to the Department of Revenue Services. Further move to designate Acting Deputy Town Manager Tom Fitzgerald as the municipal liaison.
Move that.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's see, a little quicker now. The Hoskins Road easement, last time we, I believe we had forwarded to the Planning Commission, and they have given us their positive referral. And now it's time for us to vote on it. And I look for a motion effective May 22nd to authorize interim Town Manager Nick Bolter to execute an easement on land owned by Desri TVS Real Estate Holdings LLC to the town of Simsbury for the purposes of constructing, using, and maintaining outdoor classroom area for use by Squadron Line School of way on the southwest side of 55 Hoskins Road on Accessor Map ID, et cetera.
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have some public gathering permits. They all sound like fun, whereas, I lost one of them. Find the first one, the art one. I think I lost it. Hold on. Hoskins Road. I think it's page 29. Thank you. Okay, so this first one is Art on the Green, Mosslife and Modern Twistmakers Vendor Art Market. And if you look at the diagram, it's going to be on the Terrifield Green with a few art exhibits going on. And everyone's approved the attached public gathering, but since it's a new event, it comes to the Board. So, I'm looking for a motion effective May 22nd, 2023 to approve the public gathering application for the Art on the Green vendor market and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the event.
Move that.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I don't know if I mentioned, but it's June 4th on the Terrifield Green. The next one, I think someone at my house might want to go to this one, is a proposed public gathering permit for Brewstock. It's the first time that we're having this in town, and it's a bunch of different breweries. I believe there's eight breweries coming to wind the pack. And your ticket will include a sampling, I believe. So, if anybody has any questions on that attached application. If not, if the Board, whatever, if move effective May 22nd, 2023 to approve the public gathering application for the Brewstock event and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the event.
Move that.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, oh.
I just would like to comment that when I read through this application, I was pleased that they included a different price point for a designated driver to be accompanying the parties going to the event, like your entire group being the party attending. So, I just thought that was an important consideration. I was glad to see that they did that because I think we would want to encourage people to make sure they have a safe ride home. Good point.
Excellent point.
Okay, the next item is for the Juneteenth Celebration. That is going to be in conjunction with a few neighboring towns. It will be held at the pack. There's entertainment that's going to be there. It's the first time that this event is being held at the pack. There was a smaller event held at the library last year. It was on the lawn of the library, which was pretty, they had some good performers there. So, looking for a motion effective May 22nd, 2023 to approve the public gathering application for the Juneteenth Celebration and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the event.
Move that.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last item is termination of the local emergency order related to COVID.
Move that.
Oh, hold on.
Let's keep going.
I just wanted to read, on March 16th, 2020, if we can all remember back then when this all started, and the Town Manager took on that executive position, making decisions for the town, got us through COVID, knock wood. The state did a good job getting us through COVID. So, I'm going to move, ask for a motion effective May 22nd to authorize interim Town Manager Nick Bolter and First Selectman Wendy McStudis to execute the termination of the local state of emergency related to COVID.
Move that with our relief.
Second.
Everybody can second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I do move that we add item H, just to discuss amongst us quickly what we heard tonight.
Okay.
We can either give direction to town staff or not on what our options might be for the tax appeal process.
Okay, are we allowed to do that in the middle of Selectmen action, or do we have to do it before action?
So, it's, those are, oh, sorry.
Okay, I thought you had to do it before you started. Okay, so you're mending the...
I'm moving to amend. I think with three quarters, or with two thirds, we can do anything we want, right?
Okay, okay. Anybody want to, I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, just quickly, I mean, again, we heard a lot tonight. My understanding of 12 years up here is that the process is extremely regimented from a state statute standpoint. In fact, I was Googling it. But I don't want to leave here with that being the determination. So, if it is the consensus of the Board, if we can empower the chief and Tom to work with council quickly this week on what options might be.
Right, I agree.
And then get back to us because, you know, I don't, I don't know formally how we should respond. I would encourage all property owners to exercise all of their appeal options and not wait in the case that we are not able to act in time. But I think it's important that we at least take this up on a formally basis and then get, you know, some sort of written response back. get, you know, some sort of written response back. I mean, Bob D. is an expert on this, so I'm sure he'll be able to guide us.
Yeah. I would like to get some metrics. I was really interested in, you know, how many of the commercial, and I don't know how available this is, how many of the commercial businesses, A, reached out to the REVAL company in that initial period, and then B, had to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals, and then C, now maybe finding litigation? Just, just to get an idea, is it most of the businesses in town? Is it, you know, the third of the businesses? I don't know if that's data that's available, but I'm sure Amy and her team would be able to.
Yeah, I think we can get a note report on that. And I'm, I'm not sure we're alone in that, you know, anytime taxes go up, there's, there's obviously litigation. I myself have been part of at least 20, if not more, settlements through this process over the years. So I don't know if the number is abnormal. It, it feels like it might be a little bit high from a threat standpoint, and I don't mean threat in a bad way. But I don't know if other towns are experiencing the same and otherwise, you know, the reality is, is REVAL was done at the height of, of a market. And, you know, there's a reality with the process when you pick a point in time, it's like a balance sheet, it is what it is on that day. But I think we owe our, our commercial taxpayers a deeper look into what our options might be here.
I mean, to me, what I heard was it sounds like, I mean, there's, there's three generally accepted methodologies for determining a fair market value at a point in time. And one of them is the replacement value of the property. And it sounds like that may have been the methodology that was used. I would just, you know, I, I think we should have our, our attorney not only advise us on what our options are on the process going forward, but also advise us on, I, I think you would have to, to take a look at, at some of the methodology to see if it drove some of the valuations, but.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the challenge is litigation is often the right path because it prescribes a certain number of steps. It prescribes fairness, evaluations, dates, et cetera. But if, if there are options that make sense for both the town as the tax authority, right, and the taxpayers, I think we should at least hear them out, right?
I agree.
So, because I, I, I don't want to present folks with the illusion that we are going to be able to do anything, but again, we should at least explore this.
I couldn't agree more. I think that we really do need to explore it. You know, I think we've heard from a number of our businesses and it, it does sound like the assessments have been quite surprising for people and I do think that we need to find out what the options are here for us.
Yeah.
Chief, does that make sense?
It does. Yep. We'll work on it right away.
And I think if there's a special meeting, obviously we can all deal with that through doodle polls and otherwise, whatever we need to do to stay legal.
Yeah, sure. And I appreciate you bringing it to the.
Yeah, and again, obviously not action, but I, again, I, I think it's just important for us to be responsive.
Yep, I agree.
Well, and I think we're under a very short timeline and we need to.
But again, they should exercise all legal paths, notwithstanding what we're talking about here, because I don't want anybody to miss out on their right to appeal in the event that we can't do anything.
Does anyone know that what the timeline is that they have to legally challenge?
So it's all in statute and I think if they have questions, they should call the assessor.
Because they made it sound like it's like within a week. I was just curious if any of us knew that answer.
It's in the statutes and I don't want to.
I don't think we should be, yeah.
Okay, no, I was just curious if there was a set date that people knew. That's all.
I mean, I think they should consult first with their real estate attorneys and second with the assessor. I think the assessor can best point folks there.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for indulging.
Yeah, of course. No, I was thinking that, but I didn't think to add it. Appointment of, okay, so we have a new member for the Simsbury Youth Service Bureau and her name is Story McCarty. She has a very impressive resume, which is attached to our packet if people want to read it. And she is going to be part of the Simsbury Youth Services Bureau Advisory Board in, in a non-voting role. She's a rising senior interested in sports, music, theater, and caring for her animals. And she's also a member of the National Honor Society and a member of the Equity Council. So I'm looking for a motion effective May 22nd, 2023 to appoint Story McCarty, student, as a non-voting youth member of the Y S B with a term to expire on June 7th, 2024 upon her graduation.
So moved.